Good evening and welcome to tonight's city council meeting. The public can attend tonight's meeting in person at the George DeCiero City and County Buildings Council Chambers located at 1 Deco Drive or watch live on Channel 8 through live streaming on Broomfield's website at broomfield.org/live. The public may also participate in public comment either in person or by calling 855-695-3744 and pressing *3 to be placed in the queue for comment. Screeners will ask callers for their first and last name, neighborhood, and the agenda item the caller would like to comment on. If you'd like to speak on more than one item on tonight's agenda, you'll need to press *3 each time to be placed back in the queue for comment. Public comment will be limited to 90 minutes total per item. The first 1 through 15 participants in the queue have 3 minutes to speak. The next 16 through 25 have 2 minutes, and if time remains, the next 26-plus participants have 1 and 1/2 minutes. If joining in person, we'll ask you to please step up to the podium and state your name and neighborhood for the record. The city council regular meeting is called to order. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Anderson?
Here.
Cohen?
Here.
Hinkle?
Here.
Jezelski?
Here.
Leslie?
Here.
Lim?
Here.
Lindsted?
Here.
Marsh Holson?
Here.
Schaaf?
Ward?
Here.
Thank you. A quorum is present. Will everyone please rise and join me for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In an effort to keep order for tonight's meeting, I ask council members to limit their comments to 5 minutes. If council members are given an opportunity to speak for a second time on an item, they should limit their comments to 2 minutes. We'll plan on a 10-minute break at approximately 8:00 PM. We will begin with council's review and approval of this evening's agenda. Council may add or remove items from the consent agenda, or council may revise the order of business for the meeting. Does any member of the council have any comments or questions regarding this evening's agenda? Are there any objections to this agenda being approved? Seeing none, this agenda is approved. The only item under petitions and communications this evening is a review of Broomfield's 2021 annual financial report from Ruben Brown LLP. Council has a copy of the agenda memorandum, which I'll ask our staff to summarize.
Good evening, Mayor and council. And Matt Marino is going to walk us through this item. Mr. Marino?
Thank you. Can everybody hear me okay? Perfect. I will not go in as much detail as I went last week, but I will still hit the important highlights of the audit. So as a reminder, every year, Broomfield must undergo a couple different audits. The first one, we audit the financial statements of the City and County of Broomfield. That's required by statute, as well as bondholders and other interested stakeholders in the Broomfield's operations. And then also, because Broomfield receives and expends more than $750,000 of federal funds, we do a secondary audit called a single audit, where we're auditing those federal programs, making sure they're being spent in compliance with the federal regulations and the program provisions. So kind of just an overall highlight, why are we doing an audit? What is the point of an audit? And I'll talk about the results of the audit now. So last week, we discussed that we issued an unmodified or clean opinion on the financial statements. Your financial statements are submitted to the GFOA for the certificate program, as you have done for many, many years, and so we will do that again this year. But unmodified or clean opinion is the highest level. I know it sounds very unexciting, but that's auditor speak for good job. And then on the financial statement, or the federal funds audit, or what's commonly called a single audit, we issued two different reports as required under the standards. We issued a clean opinion on the internal control over financial reporting, and then we also issued a clean opinion on your compliance report for over federal funds. We did have one recommendation that we discussed last week, and then another management recommendation, which management is on the path of already correcting at this point. So nothing other than what we talked about last week. Any questions or further detail you wanted me to provide?
I can't think of any. Well, now we'll proceed with public comments. Does any member of the public have comments on this agenda item? If so, please step up to the podium. I don't see any online either. So next is questions from council? Does any member of council have any questions or comments on this item? I think we covered it last week, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Oh, did someone, did I miss somebody? Go ahead, Councilmember Leslie.
Yeah, no, I just wanted to reaffirm the positive nature of the audit, and I know you're going to be pursuing the Finance Officers Association Award again, which is, I think, a powerful message to the communities that we serve, how effectively this administration is managing the finances of Broomfield City and County. So thank you very much for that.
Exactly. We appreciate being of service to the City, County, and Broomfield, and we appreciate the collaborative relationship we have throughout the process. Even though we do remain independent, we call balls and strikes like they need to be called. It is a highly collaborative endeavor on all parties.
All right. Anyone else? Well, thank you for the very succinct update and for all of your hard work. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
We'll move to public comment next, which is an opportunity for the public to comment on matters other than the items already listed on this evening's agenda. Is there anyone who'd like to be heard? Please come to the podium and state your name and neighborhood for the record, and limit your comments to 3 minutes. Last call? All right. None online either. Council's community and event updates are next. Does any member of council have an update this evening? Councilmember Lim?
Yes, I had the opportunity to attend the National Association of Counties meeting on Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. It was held at the Gaylord in Aurora. I followed the environmental strain, where there was widespread nonpartisan concern and detailed sessions about wildfire mitigation. I shared information from NACO's publications and resources with staff, and I also conveyed that there may be funding opportunities related to wildfire mitigation in the bipartisan infrastructure bill. In an environmental policy panel that I attended, it was stated that EV charging is the most important shovel-ready positive impact on GHG goals. This statement was made by Dr. Brian Wilson of CSU Energy Institute and Jeff Ling of Excel. On a different thread, at the ACIS meeting last night, we received an update on the environmental performance contract that council approved 18 months ago. You will recall that this comprehensive audit of 11 municipal buildings was overseen by the Colorado Energy Office, with guaranteed savings on third-party recommendations. It was reported there has been some reservations on the part of staff for various reasons to adopt all the recommendations, which would likely result in a shortfall in reaching our municipal GHG goal of 40% reduction by 2025. Council can expect a final report in council by fall. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Councilmember Ward?
Thank you, Mayor. Like Councilmember Lim, I also was able to attend the National Association of Counties Conference this past Thursday through Sunday. The two sessions that I found, I think, most interesting were our transportation committee steering policy meeting, which occurred on Thursday, and two of the proposed resolutions that they would like to lobby the federal government for included urging federal policymakers to provide direct funding to counties to support the deployment of electric vehicle charging stations and to study alternatives to the federal gas tax. And then the other one that I found, I think, most interesting was the proposed resolution to support direct federal funding for local governments for the improvement and maintenance of local roads in America, since local communities, both city and county, bear the burden of the roughly 1.8 million miles of roadways we have in this country. And then the other one I found interesting was our session on improving economic mobility for county residents, with a focus on affordability in housing. One of the presenters was a Miami-Dade County Commissioner, and they talked about kind of what policies they're implementing right now to encourage more affordability within their city, because Miami-Dade County is missing about over 200,000 affordable units at this particular moment. So they talked about kind of how they're incentivizing developers to bring affordable units forward and what they, as a government, are doing to bring those units forward. So from a private standpoint, they're giving out density bonuses, like decosting the system. So if you bring a certain number of affordable units forward, they're eliminating all impact fees, and they're eliminating water and sewer upgrades for smaller affordable developments under the condition that the water director does not see a direct need for improving the system at that time. And then what the government is doing, they're repurposing their own land, doing a lot of infill on vacant land, or tearing down actually buildings that they own that are like only one-story and putting up much denser developments there. So that's pretty much all I have.
Wonderful. And I, anyone else? Okay, cool. I also attended the NACO conference with Councilmember Lim and Councilmember Ward, but I chose to follow the health policy track, and there was a very interesting panel discussion on innovations in addressing gun violence through public health, which is, I think, what a lot of communities are facing right now. In the year 2020 alone, more than 45,000 Americans died from gun violence, more than any other year on record. However, the effects of gun violence extend far beyond these casualties, shaping and reshaping the lives of millions of Americans who witnessed, have lost someone, or live in fear of a shooting event. Addressing gun violence from a public health approach involves identifying the factors that contribute to and prevent gun violence and advancing the development and adoption of effective prevention strategies. So they're leveraging academic and local expertise to explore both innovative, evidence-based strategies, as well as local and federal policy options to advance gun violence prevention efforts at the county level, which we will be addressing in September. Another pleasant surprise was that they passed a resolution in support of reproductive rights at the county level. NACO will be urging Congress to pass legislation that codifies into federal legislation the reproductive rights of women, as defined in Roe versus Wade, specifically legislation that affords individuals the right to choose and access reproductive health care, including access to safe and legal abortion services. So that was my track, and it was very enlightening and very relevant for the times that we're in. So thank you. Council's consideration of the consent agenda is next. The clerk will read all of the consent agenda items by title, and there will be one opportunity for public comments and council questions and comments. Will the clerk please read Agenda Items 7A through 7D by title?
7A, approval of minutes from July 12, 2022, regular meeting. 7B, resolution 2022-90, authorizing and approving the Second Amendment to the City and County of Broomfield budget for the year 2022. 7C, resolution number 2022-93, authorizing and approving an agreement by and between the City and County of Broomfield and BT Construction Incorporated for the Mid-City Sanitary Sewer Improvements. 7D, resolution number 2022-87, approving the First Amendment to the Intergovernmental Agreement by and between the City and County of Broomfield and the Town of Erie for a comprehensive development plan north of Colorado Highway 7 and west of Interstate 25.
Thank you. We'll now proceed with public comments. Does any member of the public have comments on these agenda items? Not seeing any online. So does any member of council have comments on these agenda items? Councilmember Lim?
I have a question on 7B, the Second Amendment for the budget. When we reviewed the First Amendment at the end of April, we did a rollover of the ARPA funds, and I didn't see any other mention in the Second Amendment of the ARPA funds. Having just come from the National Association of Counties Conference, that was what all the discussion was about. What did you, as a county, already do with your ARPA funds, and what is your plan for the bipartisan infrastructure funds? So that was obviously where my attention went to in the Second Amendment. So what are our plans? We've rolled over those ARPA funds into 2022, and are they going forward, further in 2022?
I'm going to have Brenda, Ms. Ritchie, our CFO, and then I'll add at the very end.
Thank you, Ms. Hoffman, and thank you for the question. Councilmember Lim, Brenda Ritchie, Chief Financial Officer. So in terms of the ARPA funding, in the First Amendment with the rollover, that was the first tranche of funding, so the 10, roughly 10.7 million that we received in 2021, we rolled that into and received that dollars. So we've collected and recognized the revenue, and so what you'll see in Amendment 3 is the second tranche, which we just received at the end of June. So when we come forward for our final amendment and revision to the 2022 budget in October, you'll see that full 20 million as recognized revenue, and what we're doing is then have been working really diligently internally to collaborate and make sure, based on the cost escalations, excuse me, escalations that we've seen, what we've done is re-prioritize those projects and plan on coming back with an updated list of those projects, either within the Third Amendment, to be able to say where those expenditures are going to go. But the reason you don't see that in the Second Amendment is because we received it only just the last week of June, so it wasn't in time to put it in for the Second Amendment.
Councilmember Lim, I want to add that our approach to those ARPA funds, whether they were a dollar or $100 million, would have been exactly the same, which is receiving preapproval from DOLA to ensure that all of our expenditures already had their seal of approval. So the second piece, we're applying the same methodology that we did before. The costs, and you all will hear more and more from CIP, not only in the Third Budget Amendment, but as we move through for our 2023 budget across the board, were experiencing 60 to 100% increases. So what we were hoping to obtain with that $20 million will probably be reduced by about 70%.
Okay. Thank you for that explanation. Then we'll have that coming forward. Thanks. Thank you. Any other council member questions or comments on the consent agenda items? Seeing none? Before asking for a motion, I want to remind everyone that 7D is an intergovernmental agreement and requires two-thirds approval of council. Is there a motion by council that the recommendations contained in the staff reports for Agenda Items 7A through 7D be approved? Councilmember Ward?
So moved.
Councilmember Leslie, may I have a second?
I second the motion.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? That passes unanimously. There is no business before the Board of Social Services or the Board of Health this evening. The first item under council business this evening is a public hearing in council's consideration of proposed resolution number 2022-95, approving the Jeffco Business Center filing number 1, REplat C, Lot 1, Planned Unit Development, Plan Tax Amendment, and Site Development Plan. I'll now declare the public hearing open. We'll follow the city's standard public hearing procedures. First, staff will present a summary of the proposal. Next, we'll have the applicant's presentation. Then we'll ask for public comments and final comments from the applicant, and finally questions from city council members. Council has a copy of the agenda memorandum, which I'll ask our staff to summarize.
Thank you. Mayor Anna Burton Zetti, Director of Planning and our co-director of Community Development, as always, will introduce us to this item. Ms. Burton Zetti?
Thank you, and thank you, Mayor, Mayor Protam and City Council. If we could have the next slide, please. So the applicant this evening has submitted a proposal for a coffee shop and drive-through within the Jeffco Business Center, REplat C, Lot 1 subdivision. The proposed coffee shop will have an outdoor seating area, a walk-up window, and a drive-through lane. The restaurant will serve coffee, beverages, smoothies, and some prepared food items. The drive-through is not currently at permitted use within the Jeffco Business Center PUD Plan, and so the applicant is also requesting a PUD Plan amendment to allow the use. This property is located to the south of 116th Circle and to the west of Wadsworth Parkway. To the east of the subject property is the Vector Bank, which is also located within the Jeffco Business Center. Next slide, please. The Broomfield Comprehensive Plan designation for this property is commercial, and the proposed coffee shop is consistent with that designation. Next slide, please. The main entrance point to the coffee shop is from the north side of the lot. The entrance to the drive-through is in the northwest corner of the lot, and the drive-through wraps around the south side of the site and exits towards the northeast portion of the property. The parking is in the center of the lot, to the west of the building, and there is an outdoor seating area that I previously mentioned. It's on the west side of the building. There are pedestrian connections to the sidewalk along 116th Circle that will be provided. The applicant has incorporated a requested escape lane, which is approximately six car lengths into the long drive-through lane, and there is also a pedestrian crossing sign that was added to the crosswalk along the north side of the site. As a result of the escape cut, parking was reduced at this site by three spaces from what was originally intended. The applicant is still exceeding the minimum parking requirements, so they're meeting requirements. Next slide, please. The building is about 22 and 1/2 feet tall. It's a contemporary building with wood frame and a synthetic stucco finish. The building utilizes a natural color scheme, which is consistent with the other buildings within the center. The applicant is requesting one variance to allow an additional 94 square feet of signage. The applicant is proposing one monument sign and three wall signs as part of their proposal. The applicant has provided a justification for their variance request, which states that during the concept review, one of the commission members had recommended that adding signage, additional signage, would be beneficial to help attract attention from Wadsworth Parkway. This business is located to the west of Wadsworth Parkway and is partially obscured by the Vector Bank, as I had mentioned previously. Next slide, please. The City and County of Broomfield's standard public notice requirements have been met for this project, and a land use review commission hearing was held on May 23 of this year. Land use review voted 6 to 0 to recommend approval with two conditions. These have been incorporated into the project, including the escape lane for the drive-through and the pedestrian crossing sign. The applicant met these requirements completely. Staff did not identify any further key issues with this proposal, and that concludes staff's presentation.
Thank you very much, Ms. Burton Zetti. Would the applicant like to do, is your turn?
Good evening. My name is Nick Bruka. I'm with MAH Architectural Group. I'm the applicant for the project. Joining me today are Justin and Melissa Livingston. They are the owners for the Ziggy's Coffee. The proposed Ziggy's Coffee drive-through building is a contemporary Type 5B wood-framed building clad predominantly with a synthetic stucco finish system, accented with the horizontal steel siding, accent walls, and a stone wainscote throughout. The proposed color materials palette is harmonious with the natural Colorado environment, with natural earth tones emphasized and complemented by neutrals such as dark bronze and silver. Materials are of durable quality, and architectural detailing is provided for protection against the elements. It was the staff's recommendation to greater emphasize the use of stone, so we changed the prominent north-facing tower feature from a synthetic stucco finish to the stone veneer that you can see on the rendering in front of you. The drive-through canopy has been designed to increase the visual impact of the building, as well as provide weather protection for drive-through and walk-up customers. The canopy shares the same materiality and architectural language as the primary building in order to create greater cohesion between building elements. Repetition of design elements is varied to provide visual interest while maintaining a clean and purposeful appearance. Meanwhile, building articulation continues with the varied roof lines detailing, materiality, and level of projection. The proposed single-story building is harmonious with the scale of the surrounding buildings, such as the Vector Bank, City Bark, Les Schwab Tire and Retail Center, all of which are single-story buildings and are of similar height. Next slide, please. Project site is located at 8860 West 116th Circle, near the intersection of West 116th Circle and Wadsworth Boulevard, with access into the site coming off of the shared access with the Vector Bank, and that comes off of West 116th Circle as well. The 624-square-foot building is situated near the center area of the site, justified against the eastern 15-foot side setback and facing north to best present itself to vehicular and pedestrian traffic circulating on 116th Circle. Other primary site elements include a patio for convenience, a parking lot consisting of nine standard parking stalls plus one handicap stall, a drive-through lane accommodating a stacking length of 14 vehicles, a trash enclosure, landscaping, new sidewalks, and ramps. We worked with North Metro Fire Department to provide appropriate in-and-out turning maneuverability for fire apparatuses per the requirements. The land use review commission approved this project predicated on finding a solution for concerns about drive-through customers who wish to leave the drive-through lane after entering. Traditionally, this is done via a separate and adjacent bypass lane. However, the narrow profile of the site makes that unfeasible. Instead, we designed an early exit cut, allowing drive-through customers the opportunity to leave the drive-through lane about halfway through the queue, effectively reducing that queue stack from 14 to 7. Concerns regarding the stacking length have been addressed by the Traffic Conformance Analysis, prepared by a Colorado licensed traffic engineer, which found that at peak AM hours, 28 customers per hour circulate on and off the site. On the basis of this analysis, it can be concluded that across the busiest hour of the day, 28 customers, or approximately one every two minutes, will not create an extensive vehicle stack, especially when the Ziggy's Coffee standard of 45 seconds to 1 minute for customer delivery time is taken into account. It should also be noted that the queuing size was not designed for maximum vehicle stacking, but instead designed as a convenience for the site and as an effort to mitigate on- and off-site congestion. The proposed site includes parking to accommodate 10 vehicles, as allowed by the Broomfield Municipal Code, with two of the spaces designated for snow storage during snowy seasons. Pedestrian access to the site is accommodated via a new sidewalk connected to the existing sidewalk along West 116th Circle and offers a safe and convenient route directly to the patio for pedestrians. City staff had identified the potential necessity for a pedestrian connection between the Ziggy's Coffee and the neighboring City Bark, that is, neighboring to the west of the site. However, we felt that pedestrian access through the drive-through lane presents a safety hazard to the pedestrian and an obstacle along the path of vehicular travel in the drive-through lane. Additionally, in order to create a pedestrian connection to the City Bark, we would need City Bark to cooperate and relinquish one of their parking spaces. Their parking spaces are directly off the western property line. So in order to create that pedestrian access, they would have to willingly sacrifice one space. The potential necessity for electrical vehicle charging station infrastructure was identified at the concept review hearing. We recognize and understand Broomfield's environmental initiative. However, in this context, we contend that EV infrastructure is inapplicable, because greater than 90% of customers are drive-through-only customers, and the remaining 10% are not only comprised of people who choose to park their vehicle, but also those who travel on foot or bicycle. Additionally, those who park their vehicles typically do not stay longer than 10 or 15 minutes, which is typically not long enough to obtain any sort of meaningful charge. The burden of the additional expenses related to implementing EV infrastructure does not appear to be justified by what would be a very rare necessity. Next slide, please. Ziggy's most impactful sustainability- Ziggy's most impactful sustainability initiative lies simply in its tiny 624-square-foot footprint. The building was designed to be as small and efficient as possible, and coupled with the high-performance building envelope, the environmental impact should be considered very minimal. A secondary benefit of the building's smaller size comes from the increased amount of landscape and open space it is able to provide. The Jeffco Business Center PUD stipulates a minimum of 25% of the site be dedicated to landscaped and open space. Their proposed development offers 60%, with over half of that being low to very low water zones. In addition to convenient pedestrian infrastructure, bicycle parking is being provided at the patio to help encourage more bicycle travel. A more pedestrian and bicycle-oriented site use has long since been a cornerstone to Ziggy's Coffee's success, and has become synonymous with their brand as a whole. So it's important for us to include that in this project as well. Other miscellaneous sustainable efforts taken by Ziggy's Coffee includes the use of compostable straws and clamshells, as well as the practice of separating litter from recyclables. Next slide, please. Physical connections have been made to the site, as previously noted, via a direct and centralized access to the building from the existing sidewalk along West 116th Circle. Social connections to Ziggy's Coffee from the community around will be mutually beneficial. Most notably, many of the businesses within a short walking distance from the project site constitute routine errands in a community member's daily life. For example, a cup of coffee from Ziggy's could be a useful amenity to those shopping at the Vector Bank, getting their vehicle serviced at Les Schwab, dropping their pet off at the animal hospital and spa, or waiting in long lines at the post office. Ziggy's Coffee hours of operation vary by location, however, most typically operate from 6:00 AM to 7:00 PM, which is conducive to those adjacent users. That concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Next is public comments. Does any member of the public have any comments on this agenda item? Please come up to the podium, state your name and neighborhood for the record, and you'll have three minutes.
Hi, Roxy Jul Alakmore. This site is perfect for this coffee shop. The traffic builds up trying to get over to the other side of the highway, to the east side, and it's not really that conducive for people that are heading southbound to really go over to there and then come back into traffic or wait at the light and do all of that to get there. Plus, all the businesses that are there, while they're waiting, like for tires, they can go ahead and walk over and have their convenient drink. And everybody who's bicycling or even doing the mountain climbing or the dog stuff and everything, this is a very, very good use of this small spot. So that's just my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else? I don't see any online. So questions from council are next. Members should limit themselves to questions during this portion. The time to introduce amendments and state positions for or against this item is later. Are there any questions from council? Nope. Okay. Mayor Protam.
Thank you. I do have one question for the applicant. Is this going to be just primarily drive-through and just some walk-up outside seating? Do you have any indoor seating?
There is no indoor seating. It is all drive-through and exterior walk-up.
Okay. Was there a reason for that? Just is it the size of the site or?
Not necessarily. It's up to the discretion of the franchisee and the owner. This model in particular has been a very successful one for Ziggy's in the past, and it really just comes down to that, really.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right. Well, the next is council's consideration of proposed resolution number 2022-95. Will the clerk please read proposed resolution number 2022-95 by title?
11A, Public Hearing, Resolution Number 2022-95, approving the Jeffco Business Center filing number one, replat C, lot one, Planned Unit Development Plan, Tax Amendment and Site Development Plan.
Thank you. Is there a motion? Councilmember Henkel.
Sure. I move that resolution number 2022-95 be adopted.
Thank you. Is there a second? Councilmember Leslie?
I will second the motion.
Is there any discussion? All right. All in favor? Any opposed? That passes unanimously. Thank you all so much, and welcome to Broomfield. Well, we already have a Ziggy's on 120th, which is my new favorite meeting spot, so I know a lot of us do like having that option. So, thank you. The next item under Council Business this evening is council's consideration of proposed resolution number 2022-94. Council has received several emails from both residents and the press pertaining to this item. Before the staff report, I want to take this opportunity to remind council and our residents that the resolution tonight is not to approve universal collection in Broomfield. We do not have an ordinance prepared to even consider. Instead, this resolution would add a ballot question for the electorate's consideration in the November general election. So there is no ordinance on the table, just for those who wrote in to say pass that by ordinance. We don't have that yet. Maybe later. We appreciate everyone engaging on this topic. It's very important to our community, and it's always been a sensitive issue, so it should be no different now, and we look forward to the discussion this evening. So I'll hand it over to you, City and County Manager Hoffman.
Well, it's not oil and gas, Mr. Valdez, which is one of the few times that, at least in the past, that we see your face. So this is a great introduction into Mr. Valdez's transition to sustainability, which is a great relief for all of us.
Yes. Put you all through this.
And with that, the team approach has been really, it's been significant to reach the place that we are now talking about. We vacillated back and forth conversations with the mayor and Mayor Protam about what some of these options were and could be. Will be further explored tonight about additional conversations, as well as conversations that have happened since we employed the contractor to help us kind of walk through this. It's been a couple of months of sheer discovery without any doubt whatsoever. With that, Mr. Valdez.
Thank you, Manager Hoffman. So this is going to be a little bit more like a study session than we're not, okay. Mayor, Mayor Protam, City Council, do we feel like the dog that caught the car at this point? Okay. Well, here we are. So it turns out the answer to why don't we have curbside compost in Broomfield is much more complicated than any of us would have envisioned. So before we get started, I want to get away from the term "single hauler." It's a little bit misleading. Should we get there? The competitive bidding process would determine if we have one or more preferred service providers in Broomfield and all of Broomfield or an area, a certain area of Broomfield. So "single hauler" is a little mischaracterized. I want to be clear that there is no path forward, and I think we all kind of realize that at this point. And any direction this body ultimately chooses has risks and consequences. But I think we all do recognize that the Broomfield open-market system is not ideal. It's not a good deal for consumers due to lack of transparent pricing and lack of services like curbside compost. It's bad for taxpayers due to infrastructure degradation. It's bad for the haulers as well, because they have to design inefficient routes. And it's bad because of all the unnecessary community impacts, ranging from noise to excess traffic to waste of resources. Next slide. So it's also fair to say that Broomfield is a latecomer to this issue, with many of our peer communities having implemented some version of universal collection already, so it may be our time. After audit of our 2021 data, Broomfield's diversion rate of only 12% lags behind most Colorado communities and the Colorado average. So I'm going to delve into the details a little bit later, but basically, universal collection requires two elements: a community recycling and composting ordinance and a city contract. Taken together, these policies are projected to improve our diversion rate by 17%, bringing our total to 29%, which is more in line with our peer communities. Additionally, they would reduce Broomfield's greenhouse gas footprint by about 14,000 tons per year, or 4.3% towards one of our interim greenhouse gas reduction goals. Next slide, please. So let's talk about our outreach and engagement. Last year was a year of strategic planning, and we executed a robust outreach and engagement process, broken up into five different phases. Phase one consisted of institutional outreach, where we spoke to large businesses, school districts, and of course, the haulers. The haulers know why communities are doing this, and while they would prefer status quo because of the bottom line, they all expressed interest in the city contract. So, you know, the interest is certainly there, and this isn't coming out of the blue. Phase two was online focus groups, where we identified barriers to sustainability practices for average residents. Phases three, four, and five were in-person and online workshops, where we discussed solutions to those barriers. And finally, we tabled a number of community events and directed interested residents to our draft plans and online surveys, all of which are available on the city websites and the Broomfield Voice. So far, we've collected about 150 surveys, with most expressing support for universal collection. However, this should not be considered a representative sample of all of Broomfield's electorate, and we would need to do scientifically valid polling to truly understand what public sentiment is around this complicated issue. And of course, while we did hear a lot of anecdotal support for things like curbside compost, the challenge is the mechanism to be able to cost-effectively ensure this service. Next slide. So we don't have the proposed resolution, but if we did, we would... The ballot question would direct staff to present to city council a community recycling and composting ordinance, including three-stream separation and collection services. So the ordinance is a key part here because it establishes a standardized minimum of services for all of Broomfield's waste management, and this would apply to both residential and commercial. It would require residences and businesses to separate materials for collection, and it would require the haulers to provide collection services for those three streams. And then, once that ordinance is in place, then staff would then procure the city contract through a competitive process with one waste hauler or waste haulers to be Broomfield's preferred service provider. And this is where we'd write in components like pay-as-you-throw, educational components, and seasonal services like spring cleanup. I want to be clear that this is not a government monopoly, and contracts can be exited, renegotiated, should service standards become subpar. Typical around the front range is a five-to-seven-year contract, something like that. And I mention spring cleanup specifically because this is a subsidized service that Broomfield provides for its residents, and this is becoming a significant burden on city budgets. Bids received by Broomfield this year showed a 26% year-on-year increase. All right. Next slide. There is good news. So, universal collection will allow for transparency in pricing, which we currently don't have, as I stated. It will create efficiencies for expansion of services like curbside compost, and it may have downward pressure on consumer prices. So Lakewood did a rate study, and it showed that residents with the small or medium-sized cart service paid an equivalent or slightly less than what they were paying for a monthly service that didn't include curbside compost. And as you can see here, it definitely improves diversion rates, lowest being 30% in Lewisville and highest being 53% there in Boulder. They've been at it for a while. So the five communities you see here have implemented some version of universal collection and pay-as-you-throw, which is really the gold standard. The city of Golden has the cheapest service, ranging from $1,150 a month for the smallest cart to $30.25 for the largest, and the most expensive, again, being Boulder, ranging from $32.30 to $57.10 per month. We won't know what Broomfield's costs would be until we receive bids, but I think it's safe to assume that it's somewhere within the domain that you guys see here. So next slide. We're evidently not considering the resolution. I think that that's a good approach. The last nuance that I'll communicate here before we can go to Q and A, if that's what we're doing, is the opt-out is something that we have to provide per state statutes. The fee part is not, but it really is the only mechanism to ensure that people, that there's enough critical mass of people to join the city's preferred service. Otherwise...
If I could just clarify, though, Mr. Valdez, we haven't really officially decided yet on...
Oh, okay.
We have yet to do that when you're done, but, you know, just clarifying.
Well, here's some draft language. And if we were going with a ballot resolution, this is a proposed ballot language here, including the fee and including the language for the opt-out. The...next slide. This will be the last one here. These nuances were covered at the last ACES meeting that we had, and, you know, after spending about an hour on the topic, ACES did have a recommendation for this body. The recommendation is that council either pass the ordinance and seek a city contract without the ballot measure, or wait until 2023 when the topic can become the subject of a public campaign. So that concludes staff presentation. I am around to answer questions. We have some, we have one ACES member here, and yeah, this is, I learned a lot going down this rabbit hole, but we can do better, right?
I hear you. Does any member of the public have any comments on this agenda item? Please step up to the podium and state your name and neighborhood for the record, and you'll have three minutes.
My name's Marty Robinson. I live in Anthem Ranch, lived there about 15 years. I hate to come up here and sound like a dummy, but, you know, I recycle, have for 15 years in my neighborhood. We have a great company, Waste Management, one of the best companies in the world, and every week on a Monday morning, I cut my grass, and I trim a few shrubs and trees, and I'm always very careful to cut up my tree cuttings into very short pieces and so on, and I dump that in my garbage bin. What I don't understand is what is, I still only have a half a garbage bin of stuff, so I really don't know what compost is, and maybe you should explain to the public what compost is. I mean, I try to be pretty knowledgeable, and I understand global warming, and I understand tons of, you know, greenhouse gases and all that kind of thing. I don't know how much 14,000 tons is. I know, according to Bill Gates, we generate 51 billion tons globally a year. In his book on how to save the climate, he doesn't say a lot about compost. He identifies about five other main areas, and, you know, I'd encourage you to read his book, How to Manage, How to Solve the Climate Crises. It's a really good book, and just has great information on relative amounts of greenhouse gases and so on. And just as a side comment, 6% comes from concrete. So when we're redoing concrete, we might consider getting concrete, which uses a lot less greenhouse gas. And anyhow, maybe someone could explain to me what compost is and what's done with it, and how is it processed in such a way that greenhouse gases are reduced? Because I understand the problem. I'm an advocate of solving the problem. So what is compost, and how do you get rid of it, and what do you do with it? Does it take more electricity to process it, or does it, you know, are there processing issues that generate greenhouse gases? Or, you know, just kind of explain the basics of compost to me. I guess I should be more informed, but Bill Gates' book doesn't mention compost, so he does mention biofuels, I guess, so.
Well, those are very fair questions, and I'm sure you're not alone, Mr. Robinson, and I'm sure there's lots of folks, especially from sustainable Broomfield, that would be happy to educate you. Sorry, I didn't mean to cut into your time. Thank you.
Yeah. Lois Vanderkoy, Broomfield Heights, and I'm going to give kind of a...
Lois Vanderkoy, Broomfield Heights, and I'm going to give kind of a general hurrah for moving forward and an overview of why I'm so invested in this topic. So I read the staff memo and urge you and staff to take more time on zero-waste goals, even though I wish you would get it done, get on with it quickly. Opponents of the ballot measure support the status quo and complain that it removes choice, but we need more choice in dealing with waste and conserving our natural and human resources. As you probably know, plastic pollution is real. An organic matter turns to methane in landfills. This relates to compost. Methane warms our planet along with CO2. The warming creates more release of methane from areas storing it in frozen ground. Warming also increases size and frequency of wildfires, burning carbon sinks like trees and releasing pollutants. Business, as usual, thinking that the market will fix everything is creating devastating and costly feedback loops. In our older neighborhood, because people can choose from multiple trash haulers, trucks rumble through almost every day, wearing down roads and polluting. We have to pay extra for recycling, and there is no industrial compost service. This frustrates me as I can't use home composting for animal products and some plants. I don't have a choice to the...choice to send these to an industrial composting site to decrease methane and promote regenerative agriculture. Also, I continue to negotiate with our trash hauler as they gradually raise rates. A contract with the city would likely assure lower rates because a company selected competitively would have their rates set by contract and would be more efficient. They wouldn't have to drive all over picking up a few trash cans here and there, and people would have financial incentives to do recycling and composting so that less waste goes to landfill. I want a better system so I can mindfully reduce, reuse, recycle, and compost. The whole world needs this option to counter the ignorance and vested interest that lead to unintended and catastrophic consequences. I believe that local government can negotiate a more efficient, cost-effective, and comprehensive waste reduction and hauling system, but more effort needs to be put in to bring people along lest they resist with ignorance and a lack of trust. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
The composting idea is a great idea. I use it. I also garden, so I have a use for it. Trash dumps, if you haven't worked in one, which I have, all of these items that come from...that would normally go to composting, goes into the dump and helps break down all those extra materials. So the less of the garbage, per se, that it's going into the dump, the thicker and heavier items that are in the dump will take longer to break down, and they have to use more soil then to add it and more water to put onto it to help break it down. So there's good and bad in this. The other thing is, is wherever they're going to make their compost dump, let's put it this way, it won't be in your backyard. It will be in somebody's backyard, and those compost dumps stink. Even right now, there's rules on where you can have your compost at, in your yard. And if you get it too close to the neighbor's house and they complain, you'll have to move it. So I guess you get requested to move it. But it's just the idea that that dump, which becomes very vile, worse than the regular dump does, because they're not putting a whole bunch of dirt on it to bring the smell down. And plus, they will also be putting in animal waste in there that you won't know about. So it's something to think about. Whose backyard are you going to put that in? And if you make the dumps decide on whose backyard to go put it in, it's still part of your hassle, too. So just my opinion.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? I don't see anyone online. So questions from council are next. Members should limit themselves to questions during this portion. The time to introduce amendments and state positions for or against this item is later. But first, I want to take just a point of personal privilege and say, you know, I have to own some of the fact that we're here with a ballot question that, you know, is...it brought a lot more questions than answers. And back in January, when we were first given the recommendation by our ACES committee, council was very supportive of the idea of reducing the truck traffic and all of the problems that come with it, but we didn't know what it was going to take. We didn't know all of the nuances. We didn't have the information of what other cities have experienced, what worked, what didn't. And we definitely want this to be something that the community has a chance to engage in and have some education time. So I just wanted to tell you that a lot of...what I want to own is that I pushed, pushed, pushed to get this as a ballot question. But as you learn, that things are not always as simple as they seem. And the research that was produced by our amazing team and our ACES staff and our strategic initiatives really gave us a lot to think about, and I'm sure you'll hear a lot of those questions tonight. So thank you for indulging me on that. And so now with that, we'll go to council member questions. Who's first? Councilmember Cohen.
Thank you. Just a real note, in terms of the cost, as I was going to tell you, I have Waste Management. We pay $77 a month for trash and recycling, which is more than double what it was when we moved here in 2014, and was a bit of a shock because I moved from a town that had municipal trash, and we paid $20 a month. And they also had a discount for senior citizens under 10. So there are advantages to a different kind of system. But I wanted to ask, in terms of your research, in terms of opt-out rates and participation rates, was there any evidence of what were the opt-out rates in these communities, and what level of participation rate would we necessarily need? In that, I think it's correct to say, half of our residents are in HOAs, most of which probably already have some sort of trash service for their HOA.
Yes. So this is something that would need to be determined through the solicitation process. And what we've seen other communities do is basically tag it to the lowest service rate. So if you're getting the smallest cart, and it's $11, the opt-out is $11 a month, and it basically incentivizes everybody to go with the city service. Arvada did something slightly different, and their opt-out rate was $5, and their lowest service was like $11.
I'm sorry, not in terms of the cost, but what percent of the community opted out necessarily? Do we typically see? Do we know?
Pretty...yeah, I don't think...I don't know that, but it's anecdotally a handful, is what we've heard.
Participation rate is usually extremely high.
Yeah. And that's what gets your economies of scale.
And I assume we could, as part of this bidding process, include things like I had in my previous community, which included special rates for senior citizens or low-income residents.
Yeah, yeah. And we could put it, you know, on the bidders to say, hey, you know, give us your add-on services. You know, what seasonal services do we want? What add-on services could you offer for our low-income or senior services or whatever?
And also, real quickly, in terms of the number of companies that might bid, we had a number of emails talking about the free enterprise system and suggesting this was the end of it. I think there's five to eight companies possibly out there that might bid.
That's right, yes. Six provide residential currently.
And lastly, as I said, I think Broomfield has a very high level of HOAs, and I think Fort Collins has a much lower rate. I think Erie has a much lower rate. So do you know what the process necessarily is? Is it just a simple matter of what feedback you got from HOAs today on this topic?
Yeah, so most HOAs, about 60% to 70% of HOAs, have a contracted service already. So whatever we do, we wouldn't want to break their contract until it's up for expiry or renewal or whatever. And you could exempt HOAs, although we heard some feedback from some previous ACES members who were involved in the Lafayette project that created just kind of a logistical nightmare. So exempting HOAs is definitely a possibility. It's a half-measure, and it also creates some headaches in trying to get everybody kind of swimming in the same direction.
So if adopted, there might be a rolling situation where we know certain HOAs will expire at year X, and then we can add them or rebid at that point or whatever.
Exactly. And even Boulder, for example, had a two-year runway on their implementation period.
All right. Thank you. That's all.
Thank you. Councilmember Leslie.
Thank you, Mayor. My neighbor asked a very trenchant question about the whole issue, and I'd really appreciate if you, Andrew, or somebody else could give us something more detail about composting and how that works as...
Definition of compost?
As curbside service, yeah.
Sure. So the biggest chunk of compost stream is food scraps. And the gentleman is right, it is not a...the solution to our greenhouse gas problem, but it is one tool in the toolbox. And, you know, any progress we can make, I think, is good. Studies are showing that by weight, compost is really the biggest segment of the Colorado waste stream. So if we're taking that out of the waste stream and keeping it from going to the landfill where it decomposes and creates methane, which is what the greenhouse gas equivalent is, that's the kind of benefit that you're getting on the greenhouse gas side. So...
How does it work? I mean, because the question was...
Oh, yeah.
Where does it go?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
How does it reduce the gases? What about the power impact to compost versus allowing it to happen naturally, organically, that kind of thing?
Right. So the pay-as-you-throw model, the three carts, you have...you pay for the size of landfill cart that you want, and then you get the compost and recycle carts for free. And just like your trash service and your recycle service, you have curbside compost service that comes usually on, like, odd weeks from the recycle pickup, and you just wheel it out, just like you wheel out the rest of your trash. A1 Organics is the basically central receptacle of almost everywhere in the front range that collects this stuff. They pay for it, and they turn it into yard products and like fertilizers and things like that. So there is a market for this stuff, and we just...getting the stuff from people's houses to the A1 Organics is the challenge, and that's the problem we're trying to solve. And again, it's the breaking down of the organic material that creates the methane that goes into the atmosphere. So keeping it out of the landfill averts that.
And the point was made that a new landfill with the odors apparently associated with this type of thing would be an issue. Can you address that in any way?
Yeah, it wouldn't be a new facility. Everything would be going to A1 Organics. It's up in...it's near Greeley, I think.
So they take the raw product, and then they transition it into something more marketable, if you will, so that it gets recycled back into the earth?
Mulch, fertilizer, sometimes it's like fill, fill material, things like that.
Okay, good. Thank you.
All right.
Any other...does that answer most of your question? So in the processing of the organic material in the facility...
So there's methane capture facilities, so they're not released into the atmosphere?
Offsets GHGs because traditional...
Did you come to the mic? We need to hear you.
Sorry. Casey Martin, Vice Chair of ACES and agricultural engineering undergrad degree. Traditional fertilizer takes greenhouse gases to produce, lots of energy. And so imagine if instead of putting a lot of greenhouse gases into producing fertilizer for your garden, you could take your garden scraps and your kitchen scraps, put them in your compost bin, get them back as fertilizer, and put that in your garden instead of needing to take up GHGs to make brand-new fertilizer. So it also offsets GHGs that way.
Thank you, Casey. We'll be asking you more, I'm sure. Does that conclude your questions, councilmember? All right. Councilmember Ann Anderson.
All right. Thank you for those clarifications. And along that same line, do we have an answer to the question of, when we're removing all this organic material from the landfill, are we doing a disadvantage there? Do they...do we know the answer to that point, this point in time, or would we need to research that further as to is there a...is there a negative downside to not having that organic waste going to the landfill?
No, no, I don't think so. I think it's only an upside. And tipping fees is what's referred to as like dumping a load into the landfill, and those are only going up in Colorado and nationwide. So, you know, it's even...even the haulers are incentivized to keep things out of the landfill. Yeah, no downside.
Okay, thank you. And I want to...I've read a lot of emails over the...especially today. And I want to go...there's some questions about...from some individuals that want to know, because we don't know the cost yet. We want to make sure that this...there's a concern that this could be less cost-competitive if we have...if we just had one provider for all of Broomfield or a couple in a couple of different districts. And I'm just curious, because Broomfield HOAs, and you said a lot of...a majority, I think, of...I'm trying to go through Ward 4 right now, and I'm reaching out to some individuals asking, you know, do you have a trash provider? And quite a few of our area is already covered, so I think there's some...like a misunderstanding from some that...in Anthem, we already have a very similar service. I'd love to hear from you. So for an HOA that already has a single hauler that comes one day a week servicing the entire community, garbage every week, some are recycling every other week or every week, and we're not at the compost point yet, but is this program for the city similar to that HOA setup?
I think that that's a pretty close analogy. You know, the HOA ultimately dictates the terms of the contract. You guys have a contract for a set amount of years. You say, we want these services, and they'll say, we can provide you those services for X amount of years, for this much for a subscription. This would just be city, you know, citywide, larger capture.
Okay, thank you, because I think we need to kind of get that message out there, too, that this isn't something completely different than what we're already doing in so many of our communities. And I know some of Ward 4 does not have this benefit, and they're...they want to get...there's a lot of residents that prefer to not seek garbage trucks every single day of the week. And so I see that desire. And I'm just curious if...so Erie actually, I don't know if it's a proposed program or in place, they actually allowed the HOAs who are providing that minimum level of service to include the recycling and composting, that they would continue to operate. Is that an option for Broomfield?
Definitely. Yeah, it's up to how the...however we proceed.
Okay, that's super helpful, because I think some would like to just see the HOAs continue to operate as they are. Okay, I would love to have that conversation going forward. And then you talked about the garbage sizes right now. If you want to opt for the smallest garbage, I mean, that's one where we have the two big bins hardly ever fill that garbage even a quarter full. But so if I opted for the smaller bin on the garbage, could I still get the larger cycling bin, or would you get the smaller recycling bin? Is that up for discussion?
Yeah, no, those...generally, those are standardized, so they're all the 96-gallon carts for compost and recycle, and then the one that changes is just the landfill.
Okay. And then on the opposite of that, someone actually asked a question today of, you know, concern, like when you add that third bin, some people are going to not like that because they're running out of space in their garbage, or HOAs, we can't put them outside. Could you opt for a smaller compost bin if you wanted to? Would that be up for discussion?
I would assume so, but that's never come up before, so we haven't discussed it. But I...I mean, I would assume that that's something that the haulers could accommodate.
Okay, that is helpful. And then I just want to make a comment here, and this is from Anthem Ranch, from one of our residents there, that they actually did an audit at the lodge and found 65% of their trash... trash was compostable and 25 was recyclable. So they are, I mean, some of our, some of our HOAs are already taking a lead here and looking at, you know, what, what they could accomplish.
That sounds right.
Yeah. And I think, which is super beneficial to hear that information, I think that is all my questions for this first round, and thank you for continuing to look into this option. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Lim.
Yes. With the, if we were to exempt the HOAs until their contract was up for renewal, how does that sink in with passing the Community Recycling and Composting Ordinance where we would be requiring that all the trash holder, trash haulers in Broomfield all offer trash, compost, recycling and composting?
Yeah, so a, a good question, very, very on the weeds. The way, again, some of the peer communities did it was, it's not going to affect anybody who is under contract under any kind of service.
Okay.
So when it expires, then that would be enforced.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, we certainly have the situation in, in my HOA, too, where people are not happy that they only have recycling twice a week. They want recycling more frequently. So there are obviously some people in HOAs who would be anxious to, to grab onto the new requirements of the city with the recycling and composting ordinance. You mentioned that there's the possibility that there would be contract terminations, and then they would, the contracts, then there would be applications that would be required again to, in a competitive process. Is, this goes to a, a question that was in some of the emails. Would there ever be a point where the city would say, we know there's insufficient service provided by this contractor, or we know there's, there's better rates that we could get where we would be able to say, we need to rebid this?
Yeah, so I think what we'd want to do is come up with performance metrics. And, you know, those would be written into the contract, and just like any other city contract, we would, you know, either explore a breach, or at the end of the term, we would explore another solicitation, or we would just be really happy with whoever we chose.
And this was a specific question in an email. I, I think that this would not fly with the haulers, but just in case someone else knows differently, does any hauler allow you to get credit for weeks when you didn't use your trash allotment? To compensate for when you have a lot more? That was an email question.
So it is a numbers game, as we're discussing, so even if there is kind of one-off here and there, I, I don't think that that's a possibility. I, I haven't asked a specific question, but again, given the, the economies of scale that are required, probably not.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember Marsh Holson.
Thank you, Mayor. I just have a couple of quick questions. One, on the impact of the Producer Responsibility Bill. I'm assuming that we're going to be putting, if we do this, we're going to be putting it up for bid every few years, like you mentioned. The Producer Responsibility Bill isn't going to have any impact for a few years. So I'm assuming that we can, we'll be able to work that into that. Is that into whatever contract, or we'll have to renegotiate when that goes into effect? Is that kind of the idea?
Yeah, so my understanding is that it's 2026, which goes into effect. It will essentially subsidize recycling services for, for the entire state of Colorado, right? So if that's happening, then there is less economic pressure on the haulers, and then they might be able, might be able to provide expanded services like curbside compost. So one possibility is to wait till 2026. The haulers are getting subsidized by the state, and then we pass the recycling ordinance, and by kind of default, we don't get single hauler, but we get the services, we get the expanded services that we want. That's one thing that could happen.
Or I guess my thought is that if we pass the ordinance now, or in the near future, then when that comes into effect, then we renegotiate the rates to get a lower rate for the community.
Also true, yeah.
And then my other question is on the HOAs. With the opt-out fee, can the HOA as a whole opt out? Or would it be on the individual homeowner, you know, residents to opt out? Or can we dictate that? Can we, can we, in our ordinance, say that the HOAs cannot as a whole opt out?
That's a good question. I know, so to the first part of your question, I would say that it would just depend on how the HOA is organized. Are they vocal and engaged, or, or is it, would it just be one or two that are not interested? So it's going to be on a case-by-case basis. Could we dictate, could we dictate the, can you restate your question?
Can we prohibit the HOA from opting out as a whole and leave it, and mandate that the decision must be made on the individual resident basis?
Oh, I see. Interesting. Yes, I think we probably could. I'd want to check with my counselor, but I think we probably could.
And that's probably more in the weeds for when we actually get to the place of writing, but, okay. That's all. Thank you, Mayor.
Oh, no worries. Yeah, we write these questions down for our obvious upcoming study session. Anyone else?
That we should have had, sorry.
No? Nothing? Well, I do have a question, Mr. Valdez. So we don't, we, we grant the licenses for all of the haulers in the city and county of Broomfield. And as part of that license, licensing agreement, do, do we require them to offer recycling or composting?
We do not, but we could. And that would be one way at getting at the Community Recycling and Composting Ordinance, right?
Right.
But think about it as if you were putting another requirement on a developer.
Right.
You'd be saying to them, we need you to do something that's not currently economical, and that would push everyone's prices up almost certainly.
Okay.
Right?
So that's not advisable.
Not advisable.
Okay. And you said Greeley is where the place is, the A1?
Yeah, I think so.
Interesting, because that's where all the feedlots are, too.
Keensburg. Keensburg.
Up in that area.
It's north and east of here.
I was like, you, y'all know, you probably see it like I do, like that's the Greeley wind. You can smell it right before a storm. And you, now I wonder if it's not a combination. But you said that they have methane capture at the composting facility?
Yeah, they're indoor facilities. They're, it's, yeah, it's not like a yard.
Okay. Cool. Well, that's all I have. I thank you all for bringing all of this forward and giving us more to think about, and make sure that we make the most informed choices moving forward, because this will have impacts. And we do hear all of our community members who have feelings on both sides, and we want to, we want to allow for a more robust public engagement process before we do anything. So with that being said, next is council's consideration of proposed Resolution Number 2022-94. Will the clerk please read Proposed Resolution Number 2022-94 by title?
11B, Resolution Number 2022-94, providing for the submission of a ballot question to the registered electors at the November 8, 2022 election, at which a question shall be placed on the ballot concerning authorization for the city and county of Broomfield to contract with one or more private waste haulers in order to increase access to recycling, recycling and composting services.
Thank you. Is there a motion, Councilmember Marsh Holson?
Thank you, Mayor. I move that Resolution Number 2022-94 be rejected, and that staff be instructed to move forward with the study session that is dedicated solely to this topic before we move forward.
Thank you. Is there a second? Councilmember Henkel? Second? All right. Okay. Is there any discussion? Mayor Protam?
Thank you. A couple of quick comments. I, I do want to start out by saying that I am 100% in favor of single hauler, or however it should be worded. And I know you said the single hauler is not the accurate way to phrase this. For the reasons that were mentioned, the, right now, my neighborhood has at least three or four trash haulers that come down, you know, through, through the week, so it's clearly an inefficient system. It's, it's breaking down our roads, increasing emissions, you know, from the, from the trucks, and, you know, just probably more costly doing it that way. So 100% in favor. I am also, apparently, have a slightly different opinion from my colleagues. I'm okay with putting this on the ballot today. I am confident that, that, that it would be successful. But I will support my colleague over here if the purpose is to, to increase the discussion on this topic. And I understand that, and if the ultimate goal is to, to increase public education, to put this on the ballot in, in 2023, then I fully support that. The concern I have is I would not be in favor of taking this matter on ourselves as, as city council and passing an ordinance. This is an emotional issue, and I do believe that it requires complete public buy-in. And the one way we get that is through a, through a vote of the, of the citizens. And if 50.1% vote yes, then, you know, our, our community has spoken at that point. I know we received many emails today, and a lot of them have been urging us to, to pass this as an ordinance, but for the reason because it may fail at the ballot. And for me, that is the exact wrong reason to, to do that. I think that's, it struck me the wrong way today. You know, I think that's an urging to, to circumvent the democratic process and potentially the will of the people. So as I said, I 100% believe that this would be successful. Everybody that I've spoken with is in, is in favor of it. I believe it would pass. I certainly hope it will pass at the, at the ballot, and, you know, I am willing to accept that if, if it doesn't pass, then that's our community, and our community has spoken. But I'm against specifically in an emotional issue like this to shoving something down any of our citizens' throats without the full democratic process. So thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protam. Councilmember Marsh Holson?
Thank you, Mayor. I agree with my colleague on, on one point, that we do need to have more community engagement on this. We need to have town halls and folks, you know, whatever, purpose, whatever form that comes. This is definitely an issue that the community needs to have, hear from us, and we need to hear from them on the issue. That said, I am going to differ from my colleague on the ballot issue. I do not believe this should be put on, to put to the ballot. For one, I believe it's too late in the year to do a proper public engagement this year to put on the ballot. For next year, I, I mean, I believe that's putting it out one more year, and that's a long more time before we, we get this done for the, for the community. Second of all, I do believe that the opposition to this would come from well-financed special interests, and I do believe that that is a wasteful amount of campaign spending that's going to happen on both sides of the issue. Furthermore, I do believe that the community has spoken. We, we have multiple community surveys that, that indicate a majority of residents want this, going back several years. And I think that's, to me, that's enough. We were elected by the representatives. They know that we're, you know, at least from my campaign, I, I spoke to many residents on this, it was a predominant campaign position of mine, and they elected me knowing that. So I do believe that, that they have elected us to make decisions like this, and that's what we're doing. So I, I do believe that that's, you know, why we shouldn't put on the ballot, but I do think that we need to move forward with the study session first in order to have more details, because it's such a complex issue. There's a lot that we have to talk about, the rates, the HOAs, there's so many different things that, information that we have to have solidified before we can do anything with it. So, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Councilmember Henkel?
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to remind everyone that we are in a climate crisis. If we kick the can down the road, it's only, you know, status quo, what we've done before in Broomfield. So I just want to remind everyone of that. Secondly, there is a robust, you know, process that we've had so far, and I think that if we do, you know, a town hall, if we have more online feedback, I feel like that's good and well enough to move forward. A lot of us, too, had climate issues as our platform when we ran for office, and people haven't trusted us with this, you know, with this power. And so people have voted, and they have voted, you know, in quite a strong way for these sustainability issues. And so I think people have trusted us, and I think we need to honor that trust. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Cohen?
Thank you. I was just going to reiterate, I think Councilman Marsh Holson was saying that, you know, the democratic process was the election, and only a few things were required to put to a vote. Usually it's a bond, something involving public finance. This put to the ballot would still be non-binding referendum and wouldn't require us to move one way or the other. The question to me is why would we need to put this issue and not some other issue to a, to a vote? Because I think we've already seen from the emails today that there would be a massive amount of misinformation quickly generated, and missing, people receiving information that leads them in the wrong direction or being misinformed. So I think to that point, that I would be in favor of voting if we had an ordinance in front of me to vote for the ordinance and start the process, because I think to go to a vote, a public vote as proposed, we would be unfair to the voters, because we wouldn't have enough information for them to make a reasonable decision. We don't know what the rates would be. We don't know what the extension of the service would be. And so it would be very much a blind vote. I support that because I think there's very numerous reasons why to proceed to a citywide contracted service. We know our waste stream is embarrassingly low. We know we have wear and tear on our roads and a waste of energy for all those trucks. We know it would reduce greenhouse gas if there was fewer trucks, and we know it would be economically efficient, which is the biggest point, is that I'm very confident, just from looking at economics, that the citywide contract would lower your costs. As I stated earlier, I pay $77 to, to $80 a month, and that was way above what Boulder pays. So I think I'm pretty confident that with the contract of a much broader population, my rates would go down, and I think that'd be the key for a lot of people. So to that point, I would, I don't believe the democratic process requires a citywide vote on a random issue when we have a council elected to make these decisions. I do think more public sessions, like a study session and other outreach, would be very helpful so people are fully informed going forward. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other councilmember discussion? Councilmember Lim?
Yes. I do support having the town halls and study sessions to better educate the public and to iron out some of our own council questions a little more fully. You know, we did, you know, I, I just want to make clear that ACES did engage in a fair amount of stakeholder engagement with haulers, with HOAs. And we had opportunities with ACES for people to come in person or give feedback online. That being said, that was a little constricted by the pandemic. I can see that that, you know, it, it could have been a, a little broader engagement if, if we hadn't had those parameters. So, you know, I'm, I appreciate the fact that the community is now, is now engaged and is asking a lot of questions, and I really do think that we need to offer the opportunity for the public to get those answers before we move forward. So thank you, Councilmember Marsh Holson, for moving to have the study session or a town hall, however the public engagement process goes forward.
Thank you. Councilmember Ward?
Thank you, Mayor. I agree with a number of my colleagues up on the dais today. I do think we do not have enough time to put forth a proper public engagement process for this particular ballot initiative, for it to be successful in November. And I do agree with having an additional study session. It does seem we have numerous questions from council that have still yet to be addressed, and questions from the public that are not fully addressed yet regarding what this will look like, how it's going to be implemented, et cetera. With regard to how we go about doing this, you know, a number of my residents in Ward 1, particularly in First Filing, have, I think roughly four or five trash trucks that come up and down every week. And one of their big points that they have expressed on any occasion they get to speak with me is, when are we going to get our single hauler trash? And one of my coworkers actually lives, at RTV, lives in First Filing. trash? And one of my coworkers actually lives, at RTV, lives in First Filing. And he's lived there for over 20 years. And he said, when the city and county of Broomfield was formed, that was one of the promises that they were supposed to get universal hauler or single hauler trash, however you want to, however it was phrased, at that particular time. And I think it's time we make good on that promise. And I think it should be done by council ordinance and not by putting it as a ballot initiative. We have been entrusted, as Councilmember Henkel says, to make that decision on behalf of our residents, especially since a number of us, like she said, ran on environmental platform. And at least for me in Ward 1, that was something that's very important to my residents.
Thank you. Councilmember Lindstedt?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I've always been supportive of putting this to the ballot for the voters to decide. But either way, I think we need a much more robust public engagement process. It's pretty hard to have a stakeholder process when you don't actually know what the ballot language question would be, or what the ordinance language would be. I think you need something for people to react to, whether it's haulers, or HOAs, or impacted members of the community. So I think we're a ways off from being able to do either of these things. And we need to have some study sessions and have some language drafted and have, let people, you know, review that language and, and, you know, make decisions based on, on something that's, that's been in the public sphere for a while. So I think we're a ways off, and I support the delay, kind of regardless of if it goes to the ballot or not. So, you know, I'm very thankful for staff and ACES for getting to this, to this point. I mean, it's clearly a problem that needs to be addressed, but we're, we're not quite ready to, to do, to make any decisions yet until we have that more robust process. So I appreciate it. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
Well, yeah, I, I have to agree with my colleagues on, you know, a lot of what we saw in the memo was the first time that we were discovering this. Unless you were in the ACES committees, you weren't kept abreast to all of these discoveries and issues and challenges. And, you know, so this is kind of our, our learning, learning space, too. And we are learning. And I think it's a good idea to, to learn together as a community on how we can reduce our footprint, because you can just see how the temperature is climbing, and the world is burning in places that never did before, in Europe and all over the globe. So it's an important conversation. I hope we can schedule a study session soon and invite public comment, if possible, and continue to take this journey and make the best decision for everyone. So we have a, a motion in a second to reject the resolution. So an, an aye vote would be in agreement to reject the resolution, just to clarify for everyone. Okay. So, all in favor of Councilmember Marsh Holson's motion to reject the ballot? Question, say aye or raise your hand. Sorry, we don't do that. Wrong meeting. Okay, any opposed? That passes unanimously. Thank you. And I appreciate all of the work that you guys did on this. We got, we got more work to do, but thank you. It is, it is so appreciated. Our final item under council business this evening is the monthly oil and gas update. But I do want to clarify for the hundred or so people that wrote in asking us to pass the ordinance, that there is not an ordinance drafted to pass. That is something we're going to be working on in the future through our, our future conversations. So just clarifying that. Now, our final item under council business this evening is the monthly oil and gas update for July 2022. Council has a copy of the agenda memorandum, which I'll ask our staff to summarize.
Thank you, Mayor and council. And our oil and gas manager is making her way down to the podium. Mr. Valdez will also add value only when needed on this topic. And of course, now that we are galvanizing on strategic initiatives, Danae Brilyard will be, I believe, part and parcel of the, of the presentation as soon as, as soon as Mindy finishes. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Manager Hoffman. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protam, and City Council. The last update to council on oil and gas was in May, as the June update was focused for the quarterly air, focused on the quarterly air monitoring program. For the update this evening, I'd like to mention that there are, there have only been two changes since the information was last provided to council and the residents in the May council update. These two items have, have also already been communicated to council and residents via email, the snapshot, and our dashboard. Next slide, please. The first notable change since our last council update is that Civitas has reached a major operational milestone, hydraulic fracturing concluded at Interchange B the morning of July 5th, concluding planned fracking in Broomfield. They're also continuing along the anticipated project schedule and are on course to have all pads in production by mid-September, barring any unforeseen circumstances. Next slide, please. There have been no changes to our inspections program since our May update. Our three inspectors continue to operate seven days per week at both active and legacy sites. There are two plugging and abandonment operations scheduled for August. Next slide, please. In relation to Broomfield's air quality monitoring program, there have been 14 valid trigger events since May, including three 15-minute canisters at United 2, and the 15-minute canister at Interchange 3 also triggered for the first time on July 13th. The trigger events at United 2 and Interchange 3 on July 13th were part of a series of four triggers that occurred around those pads in the very late evening hours, during which flowback to production was happening at United, and coil tubing millout was happening at Interchange A. Today, staff shared analysis reports for those events on the snapshot. The four triggers on July 13th provide good data to hypothesis test methodology for one-hour calculations. We captured both a one-minute canister and a 15-minute canister at each United and Interchange pads, so two, two canisters on each site. The 15-minute canisters showed VOCs lower than the one-minute measurements. That could indicate that plumes dilute with time. However, our one-hour calculations will have to be run on all canister results to compare and validate the methodology. We can have AJAX do that. Currently, staff is waiting for four additional analysis reports from AJAX on separate events. And our next AQM update will be on September 27th. Next slide, please. At this time, I invite Dr. Megan Weisner to share the public health update.
Thank you, Mindy. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protam, and City Council. I'll be brief. Just one slide. As you all know, the oil and gas health study has been completed, and results were disseminated at the May 26th Town Hall. Staff is evaluating next steps and how this study can be used to continue our efforts to protect the health and safety of our residents, as well as inform future oil and gas operations in adjacent jurisdictions. One of the ways we are doing this is by submitting the results of this study to a peer-reviewed scientific journal. And I'm pleased to say that that has happened. Now we're awaiting the peer review. Additionally, Public Health has also submitted an abstract to present the oil and gas health study results at the 2022 American Public Health Association Conference. It's a very large conference in Boston this year. Acceptance is not guaranteed, but we'll be notified of a decision in August. Additionally, I do want to say that we also notified state agencies of the results from the oil and gas health study, and staff presented to the COGCC in June and the AQCC just last week. So they are aware of our findings. Lastly, I would like to mention the recent event on July 13th, where we had four canisters that were triggered, and that was of concern. We saw benzene values over 80 ppb in the one-minute canisters. This surpasses the 9 ppb health guideline value. I do want to say that CDP, CDPHE has been notified and given details of this event. And I'm here for questions, if you have any. I'm going to hand it back over to Mindy.
Thank you, Dr. Weisner. Next slide, please. Staff continues to work with DL Adams to provide real-time noise monitoring, as well as to review all noise data and noise complaints weekly. Next slide, please. Our soil gas testing program is ramping up. We've acquired the necessary equipment and materials needed for next steps, which involve locating and testing the next round of 13 wells. Staff is reviewing the data tracking sheet provided by our previous vendor, ERO, in order to determine whether any adjustments need to be made. Please note that these counts are subject to change based upon completion of the analysis of ERO's soil tracker. Progress to date, then, is 34 wells located and tested. 12 wells were screened last spring. Six wells are located, located and ready for testing, and then another 31 wells require locates prior to screening. Next slide, please. I will now pass it to Danae Brilyard.
This is a fun staff report with a lot of passing. Mayor, Mayor Protam, and Council, Danae Brilyard. It's wonderful to see you all again after a couple months of maternity leave. So thank you for letting us jump right back in and being so welcoming with the new position. As we mentioned in the memo and in the email to council a couple weeks ago, we are proposing some changes to the current oil and gas communications. We have taken a moment to analytically look at the updates since May 1st, which includes council emails, the snapshot, the dashboard, the be in the loop, as well as the updates that we provide here at council meetings. In review, we discovered that there's minimal to almost no change between the updates. As Mindy mentioned earlier, there were only two tonight from May. And I wanted to take a moment and celebrate that one of them is definitely something worth celebration and acknowledging, which is the end of that planned fracking in Broomfield. But even though there's not a lot of changes, it still takes the same staff time to prepare and review all of those different correspondence items. So we, we thought, what would be a good way to keep our transparency and keep the residents and council in the loop, but in a way that could be more effective so that we can shift some of our efforts to sustainability and other areas. And based on that, we came up with some proposal, a proposal. The first is that the update this evening would be the last monthly oil and gas update, with the next memo to council being the air quality monitoring quarter report in September. Following that air quality monitoring report in September, we propose combining air quality monitoring and oil and gas updates together and doing them biannually in April and October from there on out. To align with that, we'd also recommend that the oil and gas updates, which come to council via email, the snapshot, the be in the loop channels, move to every other week on Fridays instead of twice per week. So right now, you're seeing those on Tuesdays and Thursdays. As I mentioned earlier, we've worked really hard to ensure that that communication is happening, and that wouldn't change with these proposed changes. If there was any noteworthy information or one-off outside of those scheduled communications, we would be sure to notify a council as well as the residents. And also, I'd want to mention for everyone that council and residents would be able to continue to engage with staff through the dashboard as well. As you saw earlier this evening, we discussed universal hauler, and it was pretty complex. This is the first of many other items council has directed staff to work on in relation to sustainability and, and as you pass the GHD and zero-waste goals. The proposal previously outlined will allow our staff to strategically and thoughtfully allocate time and resources to further these goals and priorities set by council, which I guess we'll start with a study session on universal hauler and some community engagement. So with that, that concludes the staff report, and we're all available to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you very much, team. So we'll now proceed with public comments. Would anybody in the audience like to speak? I don't have anyone online. Please step up to the podium and, you know the drill.
Marty Robinson again. I'm just curious. I, I understand that I'm supposed to disclose if I sell my house, if there's an abandoned well within X number of feet from my house. At the same time, I understand we're still trying to locate those wells. So there's a little bit of a problem here. How do I, how do I respond to that requirement if we don't know exactly where the wells are? And maybe, and what timeframe might we know that?
Excellent question.
Thank you for that question. I'm Nancy Rogers. I'm the city attorney. And we actually have multiple notification requirements now, some for, for active wells that are near your house. So those are the easier ones. But not providing you legal advice, but you, you do it based on the best information you have. So we have a very active program right now to find those wells. When they're found, and when you're informed of that, you definitely have a duty to share what you know. But if for some reason there's a well, Andrew, you've shared stories where wells are buried so deep, no one knew they were there. I, I don't believe that would trigger our ordinance. But it's definitely for those ones that you knew or should have known with, with reasonable research.
Thank you, Ms. Rogers. Anyone else?
There's another comment from the all-knowing Anna Burdenzetti. There is a well notification website, so you can check that website, too, to find out what's near your home.
Thank you. And thank you, Ms. Burdenzetti. All right. So next, we'll go to council questions and comments. Does any member of council have a question or comment? Councilmember Anderson?
Okay. Thank you for that update. And I want to also acknowledge and thank our staff for that presentation, especially Mindy. That was a great presentation of the AQCC to also provide the information that we're receiving through our air quality monitoring at the ground level, as opposed to this, at the satellite level. So very, very much appreciated. So I have, I have a question about, and I should know this, and I just want to, as we're kind of wrapping up, hopefully wrapping up, and fracking is over, and we're moving on. There were originally 84 wells planned, and then there was like one that they couldn't drill because of boundary well conditions. It would have been 83. But the final number is actually 65. And then I guess maybe this is a question for Mindy or Andrew. Of those 18, is that the right number? I can't do math in my head right now. The 18, 18 wells, were those, was anything that was spud or drilled, then plugged and abandoned? Are they like finished and done?
Councilmember Anderson, so they're called, the technical term is drilled uncompleted. So no hydrocarbons have been accessed, but there are holes in the ground, and they haven't filled these in to date.
And is there a plan for that from the operator?
No.
No. Okay, thank you. Okay, and, okay, so thank you on that. And there has, there have been a few questions from residents regarding the noise at the northwest pads as they're moving into production, and, and a question related to at the Livingston pad. Now, I got to go back a couple, couple years here to when that happened. And I recall, there, there was substantial noise at the Livingston site as it went into production. And if you can refresh our memories on, I think they put up a sound wall to mitigate that noise. Do you, do you recall what they did? And are they planning to do that in the northwest pad?
Yeah. So I think what, what happened at Livingston was, is the water coolers that are on the, the wellheads for some time at the very beginning of production. And then as water drops off, the coolers go away. Last time I was actually out on the Livingston pad, those modular walls were still there, but I haven't, you had been out more recently than I have. Okay. We haven't seen any exceedances. If, if this continues to be a problem, we could ask. But, you know, without, without any exceedances, I don't think we have too much leg to stand on. They pay for those rentals, those, those wall segments. But it's something, it's something we can ask, can always ask.
So if the noise continues, residents could put, as, as it moves into production, just have the residents submit a request?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay, thank you. And then I have a question about, about three more here. Regulation 7, the air quality monitoring, and I just want to point this one out again, that the, as those, as those reports come in, their threshold is five parts per million, which is 5,000 parts per billion. Threshold of VOCs, nine parts per billion of just the benzene is the acute health guideline. Like, that's a crazy high number. Definitely not meant to protect public health, I'm guessing. And has, have we had any discussion with the APCD regarding Reg 7 and the, those limits? Because they didn't, like, when we trigger, they don't trigger, which is very concerning to me, that their technology is not where it needs to be.
As you noted, the trigger for an investigation by the APCD is five parts per million for one hour or longer. There are two interim stages that trigger notification, and one that triggers a, an investigation by the operator. and one that triggers an investigation by the operator. The lowest threshold, I want to say is one PPM for a 15-minute interval. Agen, is that right? Yeah, there's two lower thresholds. And for the December 4th event, we almost hit the lowest threshold, but we were still kind of shy of it. When we had that event, we did talk as much as we could with the program manager, the REG 7 program manager. At the time, there was only one person managing the program for the entire state. So, if you've noticed, all of these reports are significantly delayed. That's why. So, I think what we're definitely going to do is when we are commenting on pads in our adjacency, we're going to want to, I think, comment on operators' air quality monitoring programs. You know, we didn't really know how this would work once it was deployed. And I think that we've learned a little bit now, and yeah, it's the level of granularity of these systems is just nowhere near to capture things that we're seeing every day, right, or pretty frequently.
Okay, I think that's actually, it sounds like a good plan to just get those comments in on future pads, which is, was another question of mine. I was under the impression, as we had these discussions with Extraction, who is now part of Civitas, that they're going to wrap up. They were done here, they were going to get out. And then, the Coslet pad comes forward, and the Washington pad, just southeast of Northwest Parkway and I-25, come forward. So, it sounds like that's not really, they're not really going too far. Do we have any knowledge on what they're thinking there? Like, are they planning to just start as soon as they can get permits, if they could?
Yeah, so I think Coslet's going to happen before Washington. There could be a year between those two, depending on lots of factors, but that's kind of the tea leaves that we're seeing. And then, again, of course, we're not the relevant jurisdiction. We're the approximate jurisdiction. So, you know, I think our efforts, at least on the oil and gas side, will be, you know, better served kind of in that collaboration and rulemaking and engaging with the state and the partners as opposed to so focused on our air quality monitoring program.
Okay, thank you. And then, last question on the soil gas testing. I saw the numbers, and I think the most critical ones are the ones that are located within the communities, where they're, you know, within a couple hundred feet of homes. Have we, are those all on that list to be, have been located or about to be located? Or are we still waiting for approval from homeowners to gain access?
Thank you, Councilmember Anderson. So, what I can say about that is that those particular wells are top of the list. They're higher priority than outliers that are not closer to residences. So, we are waiting on some consents still. I know we have to still send some other consents. I don't know what those exact numbers are, but I can find out for you if you'd like those. So, that's our strategy as far as which ones we do. Of course, the ones that are in the right of way, we can get out and do those as well. But the ones that are closest to residences are at the top of the list.
I think the piece that would be most helpful there is if there are a couple that we are really trying to gain access to, to know where those ones are. Just, I think, knowing where those wells are within the, really close to homes would be super beneficial. So, I guess I'm looking for the very specific ones that we don't have access to yet.
Okay, let me do some additional research, and I'm happy to follow up with you.
Perfect, that's all my questions. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Lim?
Following up on the fact that there are drilled but uncompleted wells that Extraction have outstanding. So, what, we have in the operator agreements some reclamation requirements for those sites. How does the fact that there are drilled and uncompleted wells on those sites impact, well, technically, what Extraction is required to do in reclamation? And the other question would be, does it impact practically what they can do as far as reclamation?
I think I can address the second part of your question, Councilmember Lim. I don't believe that it impacts the reclamation work that they can do out on those pads. To the first part of your question, I think I will defer to Mr. Valdez.
So, the interim reclamation plans you're referring to, Councilmember Lim, are design documents. And if you think of the wellheads, they are kind of the center of the bullseye. So, everything that they're doing is sort of pulling in the pad's surface area around the center of the bullseye. So, I think we actually kind of explored this a little bit with legal on if there was any kind of hook we could use with the interim reclamation to say, you need to clean up everything that's not active. And this was a while ago, but I think we hit a dead end. And then, the practically, no, again, it's, everything is, all the wellheads are kind of consolidated in the middle, and they're just kind of pulling burms in and reseating and stuff.
Okay, well, I guess as we get closer to hopefully the end of their active pre-production activity, I mean, I would be hopeful that we would revisit, you know, the state that those pads are being left in, and if they can be, you know, reclaimed and in good shape as much as we can require it to be.
I do bring it up regularly, sort of tongue-in-cheek with Extraction, but it's like, hey, you know, you're going to clean those up. So, they know it's a priority for us, but I don't know. I think they may feel that it still gives them some leverage, so.
Okay, I guess, well, our financial assurance ordinance was meant, to some degree, when it goes into effect in May of '23, was meant to give them an incentive to P&amp;A those drilled and uncompleted wells. Now, I think we had a question if that will actually give the right impetus to such a large corporation.
That also came up recently. I'll let, talk to that.
Councilmember Lim, we're still taking a look at that. I mean, if you look at the sheet of where all the wells were, the original wells that are in the operator agreement, there are a lot that are sputted but not drilled. So, I would kind of caution, you know, there is still this position that sputting is not drilling a well. So, and we might want to take that conversation further.
Elsewhere. Okay, okay, thank you. Did staff get anywhere with the operator registration requirement? Is that still pending? It was passed in 2021, and it was going to set fees for registration, and it was kind of the precursor then for financial assurance, which will be in 2023 of May.
Thank you for your question. We are making progress in that realm. We have three operators that we need to fulfill the registration requirements for. So, we have reached out on our side and have gotten into contact with the correct people for those operators, and so they are working through the many, it's a very long list of what they need to provide. So, they are, as far as I know, they're working through getting those things over to us. We are checking back periodically to check the status of where they are with that and make sure they're still on track.
Okay, great, thanks. And this is, I guess, for public health. So, I really appreciate that you're bringing our health data to different, you know, statewide forums. Do you think the message is getting through to any regulatory agencies? That, I mean, our biggest benzene exceedances, the one that we just had at, well, possibly, the indication is that it happened during millout at Interchange A with the four triggers on July 13th. And the other biggest benzene exceedance was 226 or something, one-hour calculated exceedance during millout at Northwest pad. So, do you think we're making any inroads into impressing upon these regulatory agencies that, you know, we really can't limit, there's no fine tuning of when we can define that these exceedances are going to occur? That these are, the pre-production activities have a much broader range of impact than any previous studies would have indicated?
Thank you for that question, Councilmember Lim. It's a hard one to answer, you know, how they're receiving our information. A lot of times, it's just quiet. Maybe they're not quite sure what to ask and how to move forward. But what I've been doing, because this is what the data says, is here's what our health study shows. Acute and upper respiratory impacts within one mile of unconventional oil and gas reported at a greater frequency than those living further than two miles away. And we do know that during that time, we saw a lot of exceedances with, you know, possible benzene exposure. We had a lot of different trigger canisters. I think 49 canisters were triggered when we collected the health data. So, it's not causation, of course, EPI studies don't do that, but it is reason for further investigation. And CD-PHE has been receptive in some of the last few meetings we've had. I think they're trying to come up with a way to try to better collect this data more formally and looking at our databases and trying to tie things together a little bit in more of a robust manner. Those are some of the conversations we had. And then, the conversation with the COGCC earlier in June, they did express interest that they'd like to see the study published. So, I mean, that is a huge priority, and I'm very confident that we'll make that happen. We don't have control over the timeline, but I'm hoping that when the study is published, we can resurface these conversations again with these state agencies and say, hey, we do have this peer-reviewed data. But also, we have great air quality data. So, I think that the state's trying to ramp up, you know, what they can do with that data. That's been my take on it, anyway.
Okay, thank you. And I just wanted to mention that some of the residents that I was in contact with who were concerned about the pipeline leak at Zuni and 152 were happy that North Metro responded very quickly to their concerns, and they checked out their basements quickly. So, that was a big relief, so I wanted to give a shout-out to North Metro for that and staff for setting that up.
All right, that's it. Any other questions on this item? All right, well, it's 8 o'clock, and I know we just have a couple more things to do, but we're going to go ahead and take our 10-minute break anyway, because I need one. So, it's 8:03, and we'll be back at 8:13. Thanks.